And we'll hold it now Kathy is joining us. Hi Kathy.
Okay.
We'll open up the meeting and then we'll um we'll get through it through this agenda. Okay, so um we're here a motion to open the meeting seven oh five. Anybody want to open the meeting?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting seven oh.
All right.
Something ain't the motion. I think you just open it.
All right, we have a call in the meeting. I called the order of the meeting at seven oh five on December the eighth. There you go. What happens when we have these every once a month? All right, do I hear uh everybody got a copy of the minutes, correct?
Yep.
All right, any corrections to those minutes?
Oh my gosh, sorry.
I don't think so.
All right, uh can I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes from the November tenth meeting?
Motion to approve.
Very second.
Second.
All right, everybody uh. Say hi if you approve.
One, I'm in favor.
Anybody object or abstain from the approval of the minutes of November tenth? All right. So so pass additions, any addition besides what's on the agenda? Are there any additions to the agenda or public comment? If not, we'll go straight into old business. Uh I saw Tova today in the post office. Uh it didn't sound like she was going to be able to join us tonight. She may join us for a bit later, but. Uh she says she was working on Toplin's farm. She did a write-up for Toplin's. And she um it needs to be approved by the powers that be. So she's.
Yeah.
She has submitted it to them and um they said they will get back to her their they didn't give a time frame. So she already did it, so she's gonna wait on that, but she might start up on another farm at the same time, she said. Uh Erin, do you have any other information to share about that?
She emailed me just before the meeting, like maybe an hour ago, saying that she still hadn't heard from the necessary people to approve it, so.
Okay, I'm sure they will. Uh they just need to go through their process.
Who has to approve it?
Uh the folks at Toplin's. There's a hierarchy, so they. Okay, so the next piece is the bird feeder project update. Erin?
Yep, uh so we gave away twenty-five jars at uh the Christmas tree lighting and everybody was like really interested in it and really grateful. And um it's actually really awesome because a lot of people had no idea that we were on Facebook and Instagram or that we were doing more community outreach. So I thought it was a a really successful uh little hour of our time. Um I do have uh some jars and some seeds still left over, so I was gonna see if Teresa would let us maybe do like a little display in the foyer at the library. And which is like some info and like where you can find out more info, how to contact us and um just have like a little table set up that we could just hand it out and um all the jars, it's thirty-two ounce Mason jars and they're all labeled with different information on different species and seeds and where you can go and et cetera, et cetera. So uh if you guys want to see it, I can send you a picture uh with tonight's minutes.
Perfect.
It was fun.
All right. Any other questions or uh well, first of all, did I was anybody able to make the tree lighting besides Erin? All right, Erin, how was the tree lighting? Was it well attended?
Uh yeah, probably about as well attended as I've seen it in the past couple of years, which was nice.
Yeah, I was bummed I couldn't. I I was actually one of the few people who was there last year. Um.
You didn't have it last year, but they had it two years ago.
Well, they had it last year, but what they did was they uh they they did it on Facebook Messenger. And I just happened to be in the area and I stopped the car and we were parked on the side.
We did too, yeah. Yep.
So anyways, uh awesome, awesome. Um. Jess, awesome to see you on and I heard from a little bird in town that you might have some recycling updates for us.
Um yeah, I have a couple. Can you hear me okay, first of all, because my computer works weird sometimes. Uh I can just give you the updates. It's just brief. I can just read you the couple of points from the last task force meeting that we have. We always have them right after this meeting, so um uh just to give you a couple of ideas and um of what we talked about. Um their main, the main um thing that we talked about was supporting the message of um education so that people could understand what's acceptable um as being recycled and problems with contamination. So it goes along with the with the message that we want to put out as a commission to as everybody's clear about what's recycled and how it's recycled so that there's um it's recycled right. And and they said if they if we express why, if people understand the why of recycling right, um that's the key to help people to understand and know and that that will help them recycle better um and more efficiently. And um about the glass separation, I know a lot of people have complained about that, um separating glass out from the other recyclables, but um it's more efficient and sustainable. And so if we can put bits of information out there for people to understand why it's a little bit more work, but why it is more sustainable um and efficient on the other end of it. Um and then we also talked about uh I asked specifically about putting the paper in with all of the recyclables now. A lot of people were concerned about that or have an issue about that. Um she said it's because, and this comes from Jen Heaton Jones, who is the head of H R R A. She said that it's um because they separate it all. It goes to Danbury from our from our transfer station. It goes to Danbury and they have uh separation stuff there, so. Um. She said that that's why they just put it all into one bin. But she did say um something that I didn't know. I've always put my paper in paper sacks and 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 it used to be tied up in bundles and then they started saying, don't tie it up in bundles because the strings get into the machines and it's a mess, so they they most people did that when I would see in the in the paper bin that we used to have. Most people put all of their paper and um box board like that is like cracker boxes and cereal boxes um into a paper sack and then just threw it in there. And she says now that it's mixed in with the other recycling, that we shouldn't put it in a bag in there because the bags get wet and get mixed up into the machine. So she said it's better just to have it loose. So just dump all your paper loose in there like everything else is loose. And they've said for a long time not to put any of the recyclables into the bin in a plastic bag. Um that's a problem, but she said um and we used to have a bin beside the big big bin um that had a place to put plastic bags in. And I'm gonna ask Al if that's something that we could possibly do again, so that if people you know, don't have a place to put their plastic bag. There's not one now. So if they just dump it in there and then have a place to put their dispose of their plastic bag, then that would be a good thing that they suggested at the meeting.
That bag was that bag was there the other day.
Yeah, don't they? I think he has a garbage, a large garbage bag off to the side.
Okay.
That's so you can put your plastic bags in that and that it makes it very obvious to see that big garbage bag full of plastic.
Okay, I just get there later sometimes, so maybe he's already put it away.
But you know, the interesting thing is that nobody understands about this about paper. Uh it's just not clear anywhere about paper and how it should not be packaged. That's that's all there is. Thank you for clarifying that, but there's nothing there that indicates that paper should be thrown in loosely.
No, and that's what the education piece, you know, I've pushed for for several years now for us to have a recycling blurb into the main town email. And I've talked with.
It needs to be on the actual bin itself as well.
Yes, and they're working, from what I understand, they're working on signage um for that. Um and um and they're also um the last part of 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 this um of the meeting um that I just wanted these two points and then I'll tell you about the next part um of the education piece. Um they're saying that when now we can put Christmas lights in the electronics bin. Um I haven't talked to Al about that specifically, having a designated place because there is a designated box for like um light bulbs and that sort of thing. So we'll have one because they do accept Christmas lights and um the string lights and stuff in the electronics bin. And then the um we talked about the miniatures at the liquor store that they give away that are lots of litter and trash on the road. I live on Wellers Bridge, so I know all about that. There's lots of them. Um they talked about they're working on that to maybe get those banned or possibly somehow have a collection place for them because they're really small and right now they aren't collected in the recycling, even though they're plastic recycling. Um and uh then the next part that I wanted to mention to you is that I had asked about the five cents recycling and I had sent the email out. I guess everybody got that. The information about the company that has been taking our five cent deposit recycles uh recyclables um that they are redoing their warehouse right now and they're going to resume picking up the those five cent deposits recyclables in January. Um I have talked to Al and he says that um it's very cumbersome to do it at our transfer station because of it gets jammed, the traffic gets jammed up in there and people having to, you know, do the recyclables and the glass and the five cent deposits. Um so he is not in favor of of doing it, resuming it in January. Um I did get, there's three other towns, Weston, Kent and Reading, who have successful five cent deposit programs. And um they were putting me in touch with, I haven't gotten that information yet, so and I have a meeting tomorrow morning so I can ask again um to see what they do so we can get some solutions to that. But I will, one that the the information that I sent about the pro uh the program and the the company that does the five cent deposits and that has been giving us the checks which I I showed you all of that information from the town hall that I got all of the information. It's about four thousand dollars a year that they collect. So we're not sure exactly that they give three cents on the five cents, but it because they just basically kind of they don't weigh it and get exact amounts. They just kind of average look at the bags and how much there is and then they just send a check into the town hall. So that's my understanding of how it works. And um when I asked about Boy Scouts doing it or four H Club or some other organization doing it, Jen Heaton Jones um had a s- a son, she was a Roxbury resident previously and her son was in the Boy Scouts years ago when they did the collection of the five cent deposits behind the Roxbury Market. And it was suggested by by her. She said it was it was a mess and it was not successful for them. And also by Barbara Henry, she said that it was just not the place to collect things. There was rats and it's just um Al says it's very heavy, you know, heavy moving stuff around in the bags. It's a five gallon, a huge big five gallon or fifty gallon drum, I think. And he says it's very heavy to lift for him and or for other really strong men, so.
Jess, isn't it, don't we have a a trailer for it now?
We do, but it's not being utilized right now because they're.
Can't we just set it up so that they wouldn't have to be moved?
Um from what I understand, Al has to physically go in and pull the bags out and give them to the people who come and collect it. If we had someone else that could do that, but he said it would be all left up to him because as they get full, he has to move them to the other place before they come and collect them.
Yeah, well, there there's there's only there's only uh plastic in cans.
Right, the glass is gone now.
The glass is gone, so they they can't be that heavy. And and the other thing I heard that you mentioned, Jessica, that it backs up traffic. I mean, that's, I don't think that's a big deal. I've been up there when it's, there's a lot of people at the at the transfer station and I haven't seen a major backup. I mean, yeah, you might have to wait thirty seconds or sixty seconds, but it's not a major issue.
Yeah, the only the only backup that happens at the transfer station is people having conversations.
Yeah, that's the big backup. I meet people I know and you know, and that's that's probably the bigger issue in terms of.
Nothing to do with recycling.
Well, I'm just I'm just uh get being the messenger of what I've been told.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Um I I just a couple of comments of what you said. Um they don't want the newspapers in paper bags. They just want them loose. But it seems to me that if the paper bags are gonna get wet, well, some of the newspapers are gonna go wet.
I I know, but the rest of the paper that's loose too, like um mail and cardboard too. Well, they're not cardboard. They're chipboard tubes that come from toilet paper and all box board boxes on that stuff. All of that stuff can go in there.
Okay, my my second question is the cardboard bin, where you put cardboard. Um can you put newspapers in there or magazines or?
No, that's just cardboard and that's not even chipboard or the box board that for a while, they've switched back and forth a couple of different times over the years. So at one point, they were taking cardboard in there and all the box board, like cracker boxes, cereal boxes, food boxes, all of that stuff. And so we were putting all of that in there and then they said, no, it's just cardboard now. So then we.
Corrugated corrugated cardboard.
So.
Like the stuff you get on Amazon shipments. But cereal boxes, uh food cardboard boxes, none of that stuff goes in there, correct?
When the cardboard bin, it goes in the recycling bin with the aluminum and cans and plastic and all that.
Okay, okay, the one other thing, now I know, okay, one other thing. The glass thing was shut down when I went on Tuesday. There was no glass collection. And people were wandering around asking, where do I put my glass, you know?
No, it was probably full. I went there on Saturday and it was, we're throwing it on the top.
It was, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's what it happens. It is just when it gets full, then they just can't, they can't do anything until it comes and get collected.
It didn't even seem like it was in the same place.
Um it didn't seem like the glass was in the same place. Is that what you said?
Same location, the bin where you put the glass. Yeah, it didn't seem like it was in the same location.
Patient, it's there. It's the the big, I was there today and it's it's there.
Okay, okay.
In the same place. I mean, maybe they moved it to ship stuff out or something. I don't know at that point when you were there, but it was in the same place.
Okay.
No, there's just no signage anywhere that instructs you about chipboard, cardboard, corrugated cardboard. So you know, you go there and it's really kind of a guessing game because there is no directives posted.
Um that's when I asked uh Jen, since we're, I I had thought about, I made a whole proposal and si- of signage um a couple of years ago, but that's when we were with Mira still. And so it was gonna be, I was gonna be making signs, I guess, or somebody was and um it was tricky because they have to be able to um not be knocked off or they have to be securely done. And I thought about um spray painting them on to the to the dumpsters so that when they move the dumpsters, then it still stays on there. But anyway, I um wasn't successful in in moving forward with that, but that has been a a proposed idea. And then Jen Heaton Jones, um I asked her, I said, since we're new with Mira, I mean with H R R A and she gives uh trash talks and goes over everything specific to our transfer station. So I said, I think because we need that now. We need to.
That would be great.
Um so I taught, uh she said, just tell me when you want to do it and if you want to do a hybrid, if you want to do in person or online. And I think uh I think we should do a hybrid. I think we should do both. We should do, you know, online and in person. And um then I asked Teresa about it, if we should could do it through the sponsored by the Conservation Commission or through the library, like we've done lots of our um educational talks through the library. Um and she said that, you know, it would be better if it was sponsored by us because the library has a lot of things going on, but we could utilize the library. I also talked to Patrick and he said, of course, we could use the town hall too, which is a bit bigger, so. Um my proposal is that we do a hybrid meeting, a trash talk that Jen comes in and does for the community in the town hall so that people can come in person if they want um or the library um and online. And then it will be recorded and then it can be viewed by more people as they have time to do it. Um.
But that's still doesn't solve the problem of the people who don't. The majority probably will not go online either because they don't know it or they just don't understand that what it's about. So we really do need that signage, but I understand the problems that you're having with it, but I think it's critical.
Well, I am going to push for that to figure out since they are much more proactive in the education part than Mira was. And I have a relationship with Jen for several years now, so I am gonna ask her, you know, push her and say, well, what can we do about this and how can we get the signage? And also it talked about um they're they're still putting together the information, but putting a mailer out there. Um you know, so that people can have it in hands because a lot of people aren't on the computer and don't do the emails and stuff. And we used to have, um I still have an old one, a recycling guide um that we they mailed out to everybody and we need that. So I'm pushing for those two things, but um if uh for those three things, I think that that's the education piece. And that's what they're saying is the most important thing is the education piece, so people know how to recycle right so that there's no contamination or there's less.
Well, it's so just, it's important, but so many people just won't won't see it. That's the problem. And you know that exactly.
Yeah, well, if if we could do a mailer and we could, we could, in the mailer, we could talk about, we could mention about the talk, the trash talk. And the mailer could be targeted to people who uh have stickers, people who went to town hall and bought a dump sticker or a transfer station sticker, because why send it to people who get their, don't even take their trash to the transfer station?
Well, the the solution's gonna be multi-prom, right? Because there's gonna be some people who are gonna read, right? There's gonna be some people who are gonna look at signs. There's gonna be some people who come to meetings. And there's gonna be some people who aren't gonna do anything. Um so so we we don't have to choose the best answer. We we just have to see what we can easily do and what we what our resources will help us with. Jess, I think it's a great thing to to get us a guest speaker and to videotape it because some of that, you know, when we have it videotaped, I would also have them try to give us a thirty-second um commercial that we can have Pat add to as a link to his normal uh email campaign. Again, it can't be, it can't be five minutes long because you'll lose people.
Yeah.
But if you have three thirty seconds, you won't lose anybody. And then we could just keep hitting them and keep hitting them and keep hitting them.
And does have that. She has all these little blurbs and she's getting those together for me so that I can give those to Patrick and we can put those out each week or however often we want to. And also she said there is videos stuck too.
Perfect.
So for the signage, do you want me to reach out to WEC? Because right when I joined them, they had just put signs up at Washington's transfer station, so I could see what they used, how they did it, what sort of things they included, the cost, et cetera.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be great. And then I'll get into what they uh what they suggest or what they're offering.
Yeah, we can't worry about the 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 personal opinions of individuals that may be against this. Recycling is good. We just have to figure out how to do it and how to how to make it easy for the residents of of Roxbury. Uh you know, so we're gonna recycle, we're gonna have five cent deposits. We just have to figure out how to do it with the least about a headwinds.
And I'm gonna ask uh again, like I said at the meeting tomorrow, the three towns that I know that have a successful program. The other towns right near us, Bridgewater and Washington and whichever ones, I know that they do not do that. Um but I'll ask again to get that information and get directly in contact with those people to see what they do. Um but I do want to, you know, say that I I definitely ask Al um about the inner workings because he's worked there for a long time and he has to deal with all of that. And I understand um you know, from his point of view, what some of the benefits and problems that could be and how to figure out how to make it work for everybody.
Yeah, we just look at the problem and and focus on a solution for those individual problems. The solution is not to not do the five cent recycling. Uh so along with this, one of the things that uh that the, because I had talked to Pat about this and I knew this was coming is if we can just put our 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 thinking hats on and think of a way to communicate with folks, especially over the next couple of weeks, right? We got Christmas coming up. That means parties, that means a lot of recyclables, that means lots of nickel deposits. So if we can ask residents to kind of hold on in their personal garages, get a clear plastic bag and put in their recyclable cans and bottles and kind of hold on to them for a couple of weeks until uh until the in January, we get up and running again and then we'll communicate to them that that's open. Um do you thi- can anybody think of a good way to do that or a couple of good ways to do that? We'll do them all.
I would think the blast, the email blast.
The email blast, uh it needs to mention how much money is collected. Um because it it, you know, people will be motivated to do it if they see this is a significant amount of money that's raised. Um people think, oh, it's five cents. It's not a lot, but it adds up. Uh the other thing I I I thought of this, you know, today, uh that I wonder how many people actually have stickers and go uh to the transfer station versus having their trash picked up. Because those are the people you really want to target. Um and it's not, it's not everybody in town. I'm sure there are plenty of people in town who get their trash picked up.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea to find out what the what the percentage is of of residents so that we.
Yeah, I think it could, if it's not that many, you could probably do a direct mailer to those people. Um the people that have uh uh stickers, transfer station stickers. Uh and I wonder if um we could get that information from the town clerk. Uh and just, you know, if it's not that many people, we could just do a direct mailer. It doesn't cost that much.
Good idea.
Mm-hmm.
So we got a direct mailer, we got the email blast. You know, you can even do it during the voicemails. I think it's a good idea to to put the dollar amount in there because listen, it's, I don't know if this is real or not, but farmer's armory neck, it's supposed to be a snowy winter, right? It's supposed to be a cold one, so you know, that that four thousand dollar fuel's not getting cheaper, so.
Yeah.
Um you know, that that little bit, you know, that's a little bit for some, but it's a lot for others, so.
Um also, what about, so the email mailer or the email blast and the direct mailer, but um what about for the people who don't do that, but they get the phone calls?
Um that's what I said, that reverse nine one one, we can have them add that to the message too.
Yeah, I think that that would be an easy way to reach a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh could it, uh could anybody write up a little bit? Because i- if he's gonna either put that in the 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 email blast or the the message, the voicemail, um probably would be helpful to have a little bit of language.
Yes, Barbara always said, I'll put it in there, just give me what you want me to say, because she didn't want to have to put that together, so. Um I could put something together for that. Um so then we want to just say specifically about the five cent deposit is what you're saying for this to for hold.
Yeah, I would say the immediate concern is the five cent deposit.
Okay.
Um and then, you know, with with the instructions for the recycling, I think that's more of a campaign. You know, line up the speaker, line up the venue, have the commercials ready, collect them and and you just constantly have to hit people over the head with it. To train them and once they're trained, then you have to reinforce it constantly. So, you know, that's not gonna get done in the next twenty-five minutes, so.
Yeah, you also need to point out the successes that we have when we, you know, further down the road.
Well, we can get this message out about the five cents deposits for for the holiday time, but uh but then um I was uh when I was talking to to Teresa about, you know, having the trash talk um through the library or whatever. And she's done, you know, lots of online lecture stuff and just getting her input on about what would be the most successful time. I think we should do it in January, um, the beginning of the year after everything. And Jen can do the trash talk and then, um. I think that it could be, she said that Teresa said that the five thirty time slot was a pretty good time slot for people. Or um, possibly on Saturday morning before people start to go out and do things. Um, and Patrick said that he would prefer the five thirty time slots.
Any particular day, Jess?
Um, during the week, um, I'm not sure, but Patrick just said, just make sure there's no other meetings during that time, and that was it. So we would just have to look at, look at that schedule.
About the third Thursday of January.
Okay, I'll look at that.
That is the twentieth. Well, I mean, you're gonna have to check with the speaker, that's the most important.
Yeah, well, I just need to give Jen, um, she can basically work her schedule around us too, you know. But she just said, give her some ideas of times and, and she would see what she could do, but.
Yeah, uh, uh, everybody on the call, third Thursday in January, any conflicts? All right.
I'll, I'll work with her, I'll ask her about that. And then, um, but we can go ahead and start putting the little, um. The little blurbs for the email blast, we can go ahead and start doing that now. But specifically focus on this five cent um, thing.
Well, at the email blast, maybe we give Patrick a couple of different things to put on. Like we can, we can put on to the website. All the instructions, right? But we can give him snippets of the instructions to put on every time he sends out a what, a, a blast. So it's not the same thing, it's like the recycling corner, let's call it. You know, um, and that'll keep it fresh and, and hopefully gain some traction. But with these kinds of things, you gotta hit people over the head, you gotta be repetitive, you constantly have to nudge them. Um, and then, then it becomes a habit and then you just have to keep the habit running.
I'm not sure, um, about any other solutions to the five cent deposit thing. Because I know that it just, it wasn't recommended to do it, a collection, other than in the transfer station.
I wouldn't. Transfer station is there, you can't make things harder for people.
And the only other option, Teresa and her husband, they're so vigilant about it, they've saved up all of theirs this summer. And they just take them to the grocery store. And I know that doesn't help the Roxbury Relief Fund, but. I thought we could put that out there to people, take them to the grocery store for now, if you, if you really want to do it, you know. And then the money that you get, you could give to the relief fund.
I think right now, we, we just, knowing that January is not too far away. We just get this message out, ask people to hang out, because people are getting rid of it, they're probably putting it in the regular recycling bin. Because they don't wanna hold on to it indefinitely. And um, if we can say, hey, it's coming, the people who care, who, who are gonna do it anyways. Who feel good about giving it to the, the fuel bank, um, they're gonna hold, hold on to it, so. And some is better than none.
I think so, but also I just have to reiterate the point that we need to somehow, I guess. Uh, give Al some assistance of some sort.
We have to see what the real problem is, because like Tony said, when it was glass, uh, glass can get heavy. But a, a, a fifty-five gallon bag of. Plastic bottles is not heavy.
No, no, it's not.
I can't imagine that the cans are heavy, but. You know, if, if, if you crush the cans and filled up a fifty-five gallon, maybe. But non-crushed cans, I'm not buying it. So let's, let's see what the real problem is and then just solve for the problem. Again, when you do that, then you, there's gonna be people who are gonna have a problem with everything, they're gonna prob, find a problem with every solution. We can't worry about that.
I'll give Jimmy Hubert a call tomorrow and see if he can tell me how many people have, um. Stickers to, you know, permits to go to the dump, the transfer station. And at least we can see what, what a direct mail is gonna cost.
And I think Jessica is absolutely right, because I still have my recycling brochure too. People do, people who go to the transfer station do hang on to that information. And so uh, having it updated in a direct mailer, I think is an outstanding idea. And I love the idea of finding out exactly how many, so I think that's really on the right track.
Handing it out at the transfer station too. We just hand it out to everybody.
There's a thought. Having, having it available somewhere where people could pick up a, uh, just lift a flap and pull out a brochure.
Well, the other thing is by the time, by the time stickers are renewed. That everybody who gets a sticker should get a, a brochure too.
Excellent. Absolutely excellent, and it's not happening, you're absolutely right.
They get the sticker, they got the what's in, what's out, but um, I don't like it. I don't think that it's, it's, um, it's not specific to our transfer station. I think we need one that's specific to our transfer station.
That's what I'm saying, Jess, we gotta, now, now we have a, a date on the board, a target date. To solve for this, solve the communication bro, in the form of a brochure. And by the time that, that we start handing out next year's stickers, we have to have it figured out.
Definitely, we would have it by then.
But in the meantime, signage at the, at the transfer station is critical, because it really is. I try and it was just, it's confusing.
All right, so we have, uh, twenty-seven minutes. Let's, uh, move this along, well, no, seventeen minutes, excuse me. So, uh, Bill from Santander Energy, uh, I dropped the ball on that. I was supposed to let him know early this, today, we had a COVID scare at the office. Uh, so we kinda got evacuated, so, uh, I got a little distracted, but I apologize for that. But one of the things that we're looking for is, um, we were gonna have like a little question to answer about. This is in regards to the solar panels that we're looking to put behind the transfer station and one other area in, at Roxbury. So what we wanted to do is, um. Come up with some questions that we may have. And again, we don't have to do it right now, you can email them to me, that I can send over to Pat and to Bill. And try to get some answers on and just say, okay, what, what are some of the things that we may be concerned about, if anything? Or what do we want more information on in regards to bringing solar to Roxbury? As a quick update, you know, there, there, they realized that most of the buildings. Uh, in the center of town that they were going, that they were looking to put, uh, solar panels on fell into historic district. And they thought that was gonna be an insurmount, there, there's kind, there's a time limit on the state money. Uh, which is the end of next year, so they didn't think that trying to combat the historic commission. Um, and putting these visible solar panels on roofs was something that needed to be done right now.
I just had a thought, why don't we just simply do what Bridgewater did at their senior center? And line the driveway that goes down to the garage shed in the back, line that driveway with solar panels on the ground.
Yeah, so again, we took, we took the whole roof thing out.
Just line, put them up along the driveway, they're, you know, way in the back, so you don't see them from the street. You see them from the ball field, but not from the street.
So Kathy, remember that, that picture that we put up, that map that we put up for the, um, were you on that, that meeting? Where we had the map of the land behind the transfer station?
Oh, I was talking about town, the town property.
Yeah, so we don't need, there's enough energy that's supposed to be created from that. So that, they said that we didn't need the other, other pieces. The only other thing they were gonna do, uh, was the, um, municipal building. Behind town hall where they keep the. By the ball field.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
I, I, Lorenzo, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you mentioned to me yesterday when we spoke on the phone is that. The major source of energy that we're gonna get is from the, from the, the field at the, uh, at the transfer station. It's the, that's the big bulk of it, the, the other, the, the town.
Yeah, the other, the other stuff is.
Yeah, icing on top, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the, all the feasibility studies came back, they've had several town hall meetings about it, apparently everybody's good. Uh, they, Patrick does wanna have a public forum, um, for this at some point. Uh, we may or may not be asked to become part, you know, be part of that, maybe help facilitate it. Uh, but the, the first step is what kind of questions that we think would be important to Roxberians regarding the solar panel. And if you have questions about it, just again, email them over and I'll share them with Pat and with, uh, with Bill. And see if they can come back with answers. All right, but it's, it's exciting because it's becoming real. You know, this is, uh, by the, by two, by a year from January first. We might have solar panel, a, a solar field in Roxbury, which is, and that's a, um. That would be a, um. It would be a good thing, in general, it's, the, there, I don't see any downside to it. The brown field is used, right? Cause it's considered a brown field right now, there's not much else to do. Uh, just so that you know, one of the, and I was talking to Tony about this yesterday. You know, I'm trying to get them when they're talking about this. Because there's many other things that you could do besides just having the land being used for one purpose and that being solar. Um, you know, pollinator pathways, something that, that we're passionate about. And there may be a way to build in, uh, pollinator plants alongside, along with the solar panel. Uh, I wanna make sure that that doesn't get forgotten, forgotten. Uh, and another one is, I think that it's, you know, I know that some people are gonna be concerned about what it looks like. I think some of these solar panel fields are beautiful and I think that, you know, places that have them do it very well. Um, and it's a positive signal. But one of the things that, that I'd like to see is, is a trail around the solar field. I mean, we, it's all, we're known for our trails and how great would it be to have a walking path? And really show off this field and say, hey, this is, this is something. Roxbury is about renewable energy, Roxbury is about recycling, Roxbury is about this, that, and the other. Just a good place to live. So if you guys can think of other things, other ideas. Uh, along that line that sticks with the mission of the, of conservation, you know, please voice them.
I just wanted to say that I think that that would be a, a concern for some people, as Patrick said, you will be able to see it from the road. And so that, I know people are gonna have, some people are gonna have a problem with that, I don't know how many, but, um. But there's gotta be something we can do about that.
Yeah, uh, uh, again, I don't know how he thinks that we're gonna see it from the road, I mean, there's seagrass there today. I'm not gonna take the seagrass down, I mean, you'd have to really clear a lot of stuff to see that from the road.
No, I mean, I think you'll be able to see it from the main road, from, uh, where the house, the houses are on the. Not the road that goes to the transfer station, I forget what that's called. That you'll be able, like driving up past Maple Bank and you're driving up to Lower County. You'll be able to see it off to the side there because it's so big. You'll be able to see it visually from the road. Uh, that's what my understanding was, that Patrick said you'd be able to see it that way. But maybe we can plant some more seagrasses or some sort of grasses.
What was that, Kathy?
I, I think they're called frag, fragmities. I don't think it's seagrass. Just being technical, sorry.
Yeah, the slang name. Street name.
We'll have people that are concerned about that. See them from the road, so.
Same people who think recycling is bad, so. You know, I mean, does anybody on this call think that that would be a bad thing? Like, I would feel proud to see solar panels there, but I, I'm, I'm a different kinda guy with.
Yeah, yeah, um. I don't know, I mean, some, some people are gonna raise objections, no doubt, um.
They just have to turn their head and look at the D-Bolt field right across the street.
There probably be ways to deal with it, probably, you know.
Yeah. Well, like I said, is anybody here? Like, how do you feel about it?
Well, you know, I mean, I, we, at our house, things we didn't wanna see, we just planted, you know, um.
Figure of trees.
Yeah, trees.
Interesting, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, you, you could put a berm there with some plantings behind the. You know, so there's not a sightline right to the, to the solar field.
I don't know. Well, again, I'm sure they're thinking of that, but we can, we'll definitely make it, make it a part of the list of concerns. Kathy?
I was just wondering if perhaps during the, uh, the presentation that the town does. If they couldn't do a digital superimposition of how it actually would look from various points. From three seventeen, so we could really see how, how, um, how visual the, the impact would be. And if it is possible to screen it out using a digital overlay. That, and if, if we could see that maybe it's not so awful, that you wouldn't see a whole lot of it, um. It might just be more palatable.
All right, anything else in regards to the solar field at this point? Again, if you think of anything, just email me. And I'll add it to the list.
Questions, if we have questions, just shoot them already.
Yeah. All right, so new business, uh, reimbursement process. First of all, besides Erin and I, does anybody else need reimbursement? For anything at this point? All right, so there's a form, uh, we have it. And, uh, that leads right into the next part, which is the file drive share for the commission. Um, Erin, do you want, can you do a quick screen share?
What do you want the screen share of the?
Did you show them the Google Drive?
Oh, yeah, uh, I have to get into that email, hang on a sec.
So we have a, we have a Google Doc, so that all of our stuff, whatever we wanna save for prosperity here. Is gonna go to that Google Drive, no matter who is on the commit, uh, commission. So that it's, you know, it's there. Nothing gets lost, nobody owns anything. It's just, um, you know, there for prosperity.
It's a shared drive?
Yeah.
Password to get into it?
You won't need one.
And it's protected, I presume.
Can you guys see it?
Can anybody get into it?
No, you have to be invited to it.
Well, you have to be invited to.
What a great idea. I love it, great idea. That's super.
All right, so thank you, Erin, for putting that together for us.
Wow, excellent.
All right. So next year, whenever we do stuff, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
And then if anyone has stuff that they want, you know, dispersed, like I can send it out to the group in an email, but then I'll also put it here. Um, the only catch is I think you have to have a Gmail account in order to access the Google Drive. And that's the only caveat.
Which is free, if you don't have one, you can just set up another. All right.
Okay, I have a, a question, I, I save a lot of stuff, you know, documents and notes and things I do for the conservation movement. So I've got a, I've got a file on my computer called Conservation Commission and I've got all these documents from, that people sent me or that I needed to save. Is that something, you know, should I send you that whole? You know, should I send you that whole?
Why don't we, why don't you trim it a little bit and send us? Stuff that you think is important, you know?
Yeah, I'm not gonna send you all the meeting minutes and all the agendas.
But like any of the Weiner Grant stuff?
Yeah, I've got stuff about the Weiner Grant. I've got stuff about the, the procedures you need to use to get reimbursed. Okay.
That's all good stuff. All right, thank you, Aaron. So the next thing is going into, um. One of the things in our budget is, uh, for education. Um, so. I was. The, this was an education to me. I didn't know that we had a line item, uh, for. Different types of education. Apparently, this was used in the past. Kathy, do you know anything about that?
Uh, well, not specifically, except that if we had to, uh, for some of the projects, we just donated materials. Basically was for, for refreshments, materials and things of that nature.
Well, that's other expenses, but education is specifically for training. Go to a seminar or.
Or to invite speakers.
No, not for speakers. This is for commissioners, uh, for a committee member.
Uh, no, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, so, um. There's some money there. I don't, is there any education things that need to be paid for that anybody here is interested in? Currently that we need to know about? Cause if not, we're gonna try to use that for other expenses.
Well, things have come up. Uh, I know there were a couple of things that came up. And they weren't that expensive and we just paid for them. I don't even remember what they were. They were.
Oh, weren't there memberships? Are, and this doesn't include memberships?
No.
Okay.
This is like, if you're gonna go to a seminar that costs a hundred bucks. To attend. Most of the things that I've seen regarding conservation have been free, but I guess there are some paid things that are out there. So again, the, the, the thing, the, my. Goal right now is just to find out, we don't need to go looking for stuff to spend money on. Um, but if there is something that, that you were, you thought that would be helpful. To the conservation that costs money. Now's the time to speak up.
Okay.
Or else we're gonna find another home for it. All right, so now the, uh. The, if, and, and so what we'll do in the future is we'll, we'll try to fix, we'll put that into other expenses. And then other expenses gives us the larger leeways, more, more of the stuff that Kathy was talking about. All right, so, um. The next thing is the winner grant. So there was some, some confusion, Tony, maybe you can help us out on this? That the grant was to fund. Things specifically related to the pollinator pathway? Is that your understanding of it?
You know, the way the grant was originally written, uh, it didn't specifically say pollinator pathway, but. When I spoke to them on the phone. And I mentioned, she said, well, what sort of things you, you guys working on? I mentioned the pollinator pathway and she said, oh, that, that's perfect. That's great, you know? So. But if you, if you read the, if you read the wording in the grant. Um, I, I have to read. I don't think just specific, it specifically mentions. Uh, the pollinator pathway. But it does mention environmental initiatives and education programs. It seems like it would work. I mean, it seems like you could use it for that.
So let's, uh, let's revisit that and just get a better understanding, even if we have to make a phone call to them. To make sure that we wanna stay within their good graces.
Yeah, no, yeah, I do, I know. I, I can send you the, uh, I have the, the signed grant that was approved.
Sure. Send it to me and we could take a look at that, uh, together. And again, if we need to, we can give them.
I'll send it out to the group. I've got, I've got a copy of it.
Awesome. Let's pick that up for next month. Public relations and outreach, Aaron, what were you thinking on this one?
Uh, so that was from the last meeting. I just had a single line on it. Uh, we will discuss ecotourism, mainly in social media outreach in further detail at the next meeting. Um, I have a vague recollection, but there's a lot. I was trying to.
Alright, so one of the things, one of the things that recently come up is, uh, Western Connecticut tourism. So, you know. With the marketing that, so Western Connecticut tourism, the, uh, Connecticut tourism is split up into three sections. And we fall onto Western, of course, let's build those. Roxbury, I don't know if you've noticed, but Mine Hill, uh, has been, uh. Very much represented on, on billboards on Route eighty-four and even out. Uh, e- even down in New York State and New York City. Uh, right outside of Shea. So that, that's been pretty cool, uh, even though people don't know where Roxbury is. But. That, that is a resource for us to turn around and say, okay. Let's, let's advertise our, um. Our trails and the beauty of Roxbury, especially now that COVID's kinda rare and it's heavily ahead again. Try to keep people outside, try to keep them separated and, and give them some pressure at the same time. So if we wanted to do that outreach, we can go to Connecticut Tourism. And basically push that a little bit more, uh, and maybe do that in conjunction with the Roxbury Land Trust. Um, do, uh, do you guys think that that's someplace we should spend a little bit of time or? We have enough on our plate?
I, I have a concern with it and, and I, the concern is that, um, I don't think. I think there are a lot of people in town who are not gonna welcome the idea of having. People from outside Roxbury coming to our trails.
Okay.
I think, I, I just think there's gonna be some resistance there. You know, I think of the hiking I've done in some of the national parks and. I sometimes say to my wife when we're hiking, I said, you know. It's, it's even more, it's more enjoyable to hike on the trails in Roxbury because there aren't, you know, wall-to-wall people here. So it's.
So how do we communicate it but keep it within Roxbury? What are some good ideas?
Well, the land trust, yeah, you gotta do with your land trust. There are thirty miles of trails, um.
I think, I, I see a ton of people posting. There's a group called Connecticut Hiking and Outdoor Adventures, um, and they don't just limit it to Connecticut. I mean, it does say Connecticut in the title, but they're, they post. All different hikes all over New England all the time. And there are a crap ton of people that come to Mine Hill that are not. From this area at all, all the time. And I can tell you from the many people that we've had to get out of the woods. A lot of them are not from around here either.
You would know, uh.
Kathy, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I just questioned, I just questioned the whole idea of trying to increase tourism. What are we trying? Can we identify what we're trying to achieve with increasing tourism?
We're just doing.
But what's the benefit to Roxbury and, uh, its citizens by increasing tourism? I'm just not quite sure about that.
So the line item is, uh, about increasing outreach and public relations. So that's one thing that we could look at. And again, it, it doesn't sound like that's something that we wanna do, which is fine. We don't have to do that. Question was rephrased, Kathy, to say, okay, what can we do within Roxbury? To communicate to Roxperians.
Okay, so I just wanted to reiterate what, basically what Tony had said, that I'm, I'm not sure that that's. You know, beyond Roxbury's borders, I'm not sure that that's a good one for Roxbury. Uh, and again, um, I, the E-Blasts are. Are so beneficial and so informative. Everybody I know reads every sentence. Of those E-Blasts about, you know, Roxperians, if you haven't tried it, try the trails. It's on our website, that kind of thing.
Is this something that we wanna work with, uh, Roxbury Land Trust on and try to? Create something to add to the E-Blast Conservation of Roxbury Land Trust would like. Like you know that there's safe ways for you to reach out.
And also in conjunction with that, you might wanna talk about educating people of the benefits of donating. Land, the tax benefits. I don't know what the tax benefits are, but I know we did have a program in the past where a tax expert. Spoke at a townwide meeting about the benefits of donating. To a land trust.
That falls more on the land trust agenda than, than ours on conservation. Plus, there's a whole bunch of people.
Actually, I kind of think it's hand in hand.
There's a whole bunch of people, talking about controversy, there's a whole bunch of people in town. That think Land Trust has way too much land and that's, that's been coming up with the, um, the Housing Commission that's, that's happening now. Um, there, there's a lot of. Pushback about how much land is actually tied up.
Really? I, I, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that. I am surprised because that's one of Roxbury's strong points is the fact that.
Crown jewel of Roxbury.
I agree.
Yeah, but I've heard that a few times as well.
Yeah, so the, the Housing Commission's, uh, talks are, are happening now and. And again, the people who want to add. Affordable housing, whatever you wanna call it in Roxbury, that's, that's the first target that they have. So I, again, as far as conservation's concerned. That's a Roxbury Land Trust thing. That's not a. That's not a, we can help support them. We can help communicate it through our channels. But they're gonna spend the time. So I'm talking about outreach. I think. Right now with the recycling. We have enough on our plate for our community outreach.
Okay.
Well, you know, um, I just bring this funny up about the, the trails. Trudy, uh, had mentioned to me. When we were talking about the land trust, she said that. One of her goals was to hike all thirty miles of all the trails in each of the four seasons. And I thought, wow, my goal is just to hike all, all the trails. She wanted to do.
Run it four times.
Four times each season, uh. I, I thought that was pretty cool and I think, uh, you know. I mean, I don't know how you, you leave a story around that, but it seems like that could be a motivator to get people to get out on the trails, because. I mean, it is good exercise and it's, it gets you out and. It raises awareness of, of, uh, of our, of our trails and the land trust.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, well, when I was up at college, we did a thing, uh, in Serenac Lake. There was the six peaks that you could hike and you'd get just like little badges for it. Or, um, in the Adirondacks, they have the forty, forty-six high peaks, I think it is. I want to say it's forty-six high peaks and then it's just, you get like, like a certificate and a badge, you know, for having completed it. We could do something similar.
Yeah, that, that would be cool. That would be cool.
Alright. Let's try to develop that. And so we're, we're, uh, about eight minutes after the hour here. So, um, I'm gonna introduce, so senior projects, do we have anybody who's looking for help with senior projects?
So, no, it was tabled from the last meeting. The only, uh, other thing I thought of after the meeting is most. Cause I went through senior project, most of your senior projects have to be finalized by October. So it might be something that we could look at, like juniors for next year.
Okay. Project also, shapog, so, um, yeah, and I had put out there and several years ago. Uh, to the head of the, of the team at that point, um. I had put out some things from, from Sustainable CT to see if, and it was, you know. Crossed over with commission, the Conservation Commission to see if any kids were interested in. Doing any kind of projects to give them ideas, but I didn't get any bites then, so, but we can do that again. But we need to do that at the beginning of the school year when they're kind of trying to figure out what they wanna do.
Okay. So the, uh. We have time on that. And then the backpack leaf blowers. I just sent out an email to everyone. Within one of the New York Times articles, there was a couple of New York Times articles. That talked about not only the sound pollution, but actually the, the. The actual pollution that comes from the, the gasoline-powered. Leaf blowers and some of the environmental stuff that comes along with it too. So, um. You know, too big of a conversation to even start right now, but what we can do is if any, everybody can take a look at that article. Um, and just look into it. Pat actually reached out and said that this came up in the. Order Selectments meeting. There have been towns that have out. Or banned, I don't wanna say outlawed, but banned, uh, backpack. Uh, gas-powered backpack leaf blowers. Um, lithium. Uh, blowers are, the technology is starting to come back where. You know, rechargeable battery packs are doing just as good of a job. Um, you know, I thought this is, this is kinda like a pipe dream, but. I thought it'd be kinda cool if, um, in our grant research for two thousand twenty-two. We could find a way to, uh, spearhead a. Like a trade-in program of sorts. Because I think, I think it's very. Irresponsible to, to change, ask somebody to give up something they already have. And that they invested a lot of money for. For, um, another item. That does the same exact job. Um, but if they could trade it in, maybe, maybe they'd be so inclined. You know, so every, when I, when I drove around in my old Land Rover. Everybody would say, hey, that's a gas guzzler. You're ruining the environment. I said, this, this truck has, uh, this truck has not been in a landfill. You know, and. I've gone through one truck and, and this is twenty years old and so on and so forth. So there, there's all different kinds of, of being sustainable. Um, but I think that there's a balance and, and just not being wasteful is, is step one. Um, so I don't know, again, a big conversation, too big for right now. But read the article when you have a moment, uh, if you wanna do a little bit of research. And then we'll make this a big item for the January. Maybe we'll make this the, the headline item for the January, um. A meeting. If you guys like.
Good idea.
Alright.
I, I mentioned earlier to you, Lorenzo, that, um. Uh, a fellow I spoke to would know, he told me a lot of the landscapers are already moving over to. Um, electric backpack blowers and electric equipment. It's just so much. Uh, easier, so much more convenient and less maintenance. And works just as well.
Yeah, so, and, and it's, it's easier on, on the employees, um, as you were saying. Volume-wise, mechanically, all that fun stuff, so. Um, yeah, so it's good to get educated on. Let's educate people on recycling first and make that, you know, that's. The thing we have to do next. Um, and, you know, Aaron, if you could, uh, reach out to Teresa and see if we could put a little stand there. Whatever we do there, maybe we can duplicate and put in the, uh, the front hall over at Town Hall. Um, or in the, or in the clerk's office. Uh, maybe put a couple of those, a couple of those jars. And again, just. Try to drive people to the Facebook page, try to drive people to Instagram. And, um, and try to drive people to these meetings, so.
Yeah.
Anyone have anything else to add?
Just wanna ask, two things I said I would do, I wanna make sure we're, I'm gonna do, uh, one was to, um. I'm gonna send out the, the. Signed copy of the Weiner Grant to the group, so we can go over that. And then I'll find out from, uh, Jimmy Hovert about the, uh, the number of people that have. Uh, permits, uh, stickers, go to the transfer.
And if you wanna send out a group email, Tony, I mean, we can have conversations via email and stuff.
Should I send it out to every, the group or just send it to Aaron or?
Yeah, you can send it to Aaron, Aaron can send it to everybody, or if you wanna, if you want feedback on anything, send it to the group. And then we can keep it in that thread. All I ask is if we do those group, uh, messages. Just keep that thread to that conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Alright guys, so everyone, I wish you a, uh, with this, right before we close, I wanna wish everybody a happy and a safe. And a healthy holiday. Do I have a motion for the adjournment of the Good Order?
Motion.
Motion by Aaron, any second?
One second.
On that, all in favor? Alright guys, have a wonderful evening and a great and happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Bye guys.
Enjoy everyone, good night.